The event will take place from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. in Central Park. There will be trick or treating at local community booths, costume contests, bounce houses, and inflatables, child and pet costume parade, music games, and food vendors. For more information, please visit samlark.org. Next, we have the State of the City and Business Awards Ceremony. This is presented by Providence Mission Hospital, and this is an event of the Santa Margarita Chamber of Commerce. The event will be held on Tuesday, November 6th, 2025, located at the Dunn Canyon Golf Club. A reception will be held from 5:00 to 5:30 p.m., and the program runs from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. The State of the City Address portion of the program, to be delivered by Mayor Beal, will begin at 7:15 p.m. This portion of the event is open to the public free of charge. Mayor Beal will deliver the State of the City Address, highlighting recent achievements, ongoing projects, and the vision for the future of Rancho Santa Margarita. The event will also recognize outstanding local businesses and community partners whose contributions help make RSM a safe, beautiful, and thriving city. For more information, please visit rsmchamber.org. And finally, the city would like to thank and recognize local veterans for their service and invite them and their families to a recognition ceremony at City Hall on Wednesday, November 12th. A reception will begin at 6:00 p.m. at the Bell Tower Regional Community Center, and light refreshments will be served. Following the reception will be the recognition ceremony at the council meeting, which begins at 7:00 p.m. We are collecting photos of veterans to be recognized during the program. If you would like to submit a photo for your veteran, please visit rsmconnect.org or call the Community Services Department at 949-216-9700. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to item two, Councilmember Comments and Reports. 2.1 is Councilmember Comments. Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate the RSM Chamber of Commerce, Sean Autry, for putting on a great event every year. Rancho Family Fest is something that people look forward to. It was very crowded Friday and Saturday, well-attended. The city of Rancho Santa Margarita is a major sponsor of Rancho Family Fest. That's just USAG and Samlark. To their good graces, we get to use that Central Park. But it was really a great and very enjoyable event. And I know how hard the Chambers Committee for Rancho Family Fest works. I know because my wife's on that committee. She worked very hard, not just for a few weeks or a few months prior to the event, but really for a full year. So congratulations. I'm looking forward to maybe debriefing with the Chamber to find out what they feel, what went well with Rancho Family Fest, and what can be improved for the benefit of our residents and business community. So again, congratulations. I had a great time. It took me two days to recover. My back isn't what it used to be. So thanks for a great time, Sean. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Councilmember Figueroa.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We have some fun and exciting programs coming up during the month of October at our RSM Library. The first program is the Cover-to-Cover Club Program for ages four to 12. From November now through November 15th, if a child reads five books or for 300 minutes, you can earn a free hamburger from In-N-Out. And if your child is interested, please stop by the library for your reading log card. And then to celebrate the month of October, we have a Halloween craft program for adults on Tuesday, October 21st at 5:30. And then on October 22nd, from 3:30 to 4:30, the Monster Bash will be held at our library, where children can wear their costume and participate in a Halloween parade. So a lot of fun things coming up at our RSM Library this month. And also too, I just wanted to thank all the volunteers and everyone who came out last minute to help out last week's RSM Cares Food Pantry. So amazing to see all the volunteers who work so hard. They have this down to a science right now, and they have to do it in a very short amount of time. So this last week, they served over 265 families at the food pantry, which actually included 40 new families this week as well. There's going to be some upcoming food drives planned at pavilions for the holiday season. The first one's going to be on November 15th from 10:00 to 4:00. And the next one will be during the month of December, December 13th, 10:00 to 4:00, to get ready for the holiday season. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind people that from October through April, RSM residential areas have street sweeping services twice a month. You can help keep RSM clean by moving your car on the designated sweeping days. If you're not sure what those days, dates are, street sweeping maps can be found on the city website. And then RSM Cares has their autumn-themed art show in the Bell Tower Community Center. Paintings, photographs, and mosaic artwork showcasing the talents of our local artists will be up through the end of May of October. And I encourage you to stop by. They're truly great works of art. And then we also have several events, as we've talked, a couple of them on this Saturday. One of them is Restore the Shore with Samlark, and that's to help make the lake shore cleaner. It's to join Samlark and Canyon Wildlife Initiative for a litter pickup day around the lake from 10:30 to 12:30 on Saturday, October 11th. All supplies will be provided. You can also check in at the Beach Club at 10:15 to learn more about the lake's ecosystem and then get started. We also have with Mission Viejo Animal Services Center, who we contract with to provide our animal services. They are having a Forever Friends Fall Festival and Open House. And this is an opportunity for families to learn the important work they do for animals and the community. I'm very proud that Rancho Santa Margarita contracts with them for animal services. Their shelter is truly one of the best in the States. And I personally work in an animal rescue, and I'm really happy that they're going to have this event. You can go and adopt different animals there, not only from the shelter, but from other organizations. And that's this Saturday at their animal shelter at 28095 Hillcrest in Mission Viejo from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Then I would also like to thank the Chamber and all the volunteers who made RSM Family Fest possible. There is so much amount of coordination and teamwork, and it was very inspiring to see. I know how hard you have all worked, and it was just wonderful to see our local businesses shine and our residents enjoying themselves that night. And just kudos to everyone at the Chamber for all the hard work and all the other volunteers from our community who came out to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to item 2.2, Committee Assignment Reports. First up is Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I attended the Joint Finance and Investment Committee meeting. The first item that was discussed included the presentation of the successful audit that was performed by an independent accounting firm, and the final results will be presented at a future Joint Board of Directors meeting. And the second item presented that day included the recommendation that the Toll Road Pacifica Building should be under shared ownership between San Joaquin and the Foothill Eastern Toll Roads. So the committee recommended that San Joaquin should purchase 50% ownership from Foothill Eastern for $6.48 million. So this item will be presented at the upcoming Board of Directors meeting at TCA. Also too, I attended this week's CAR meeting with Councilmember Barrett, Jennifer Savante, and Laura Lopez. They discussed the CAR members that have been attending several community events to inform residents about fire safety and home hardening. And we just want to thank all of us, too, for doing such a great job getting this important information out to our city and to our community. And the majority of the meeting was an update from Mike Stefanski on Trabeca Canyon Water District's exploration of alternative models, which could lead to possible consolidation. And you are very much encouraged to share your thoughts and opinions at upcoming Trabeca Canyon Water District Board meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us to item three, Presentations and Proclamations.
Mr. Mayor, I think under 2.2, it's also a presentation.
My apologies, Mayor Proten. Would you like to give that?
I would. I am honored to serve on the Board of Directors of the Orange County Fire Authority on behalf of our city. Our last meeting was on September 25th. At that time, we approved a side letter agreement to a memorandum of understanding with the Orange County Professional Firefighters Association to award a contract for rapid intervention injury management services. In short, what that's going to do is assist firefighters to recover and return to work following on-duty injuries. And so that's something to the benefit of the Orange County Professional Firefighters Association. The other item I'd like to bring up about the OCFA, and this wasn't part of the meeting, I think it's of public interest, there's now a new helipad that's been opened up on La Pata, right by the fire station in San Clemente, that will, during adverse weather conditions, and for us, I think we can all agree, adverse weather conditions for wildfire usually means Santa Ana winds, they will have a helicopter there to assist in a prompt or immediate rapid response to any issue with wildfires. So that new helipad is also due to the fact that the city of San Clemente donated the property to the Orange County Fire Authority for the building of that helipad. So I think that's a good thing for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are at Agenda Item Three, Presentations and Proclamations. At this time, I'd like to invite the Mayor Proten to join me on this next presentation. Okay, this is item 3.1, a proclamation declaring Fire Prevention Week in Rancho Santa Margarita. And to assist us in this presentation, I would like to invite forward Orange County Fire Authority Captain Jeremy Bellum. Lithium-ion batteries are increasingly used in everyday devices such as smartphones, tablets, laptops, e-cigarettes, e-bikes, power tools, kids' toys, making them a common presence in our homes and our workplaces. And lithium-ion batteries can cause fires that can spread rapidly, release toxic gases, and they're difficult to extinguish, creating unique dangers for both residents and first responders. So the proper handling, storage, and disposal of these batteries, along with public awareness of safe charging practices, can greatly reduce the risk of fires and injuries. Whereas the Orange County residents are responsive to public education and outreach measures, and they can take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. The 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home," strives to educate everyone about how to buy, charge, and dispose of these safely. So therefore, as the mayor, on behalf of our city council colleagues, I do proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025 is Fire Prevention Week in Rancho Santa Margarita. I urge all of our residents to practice safe battery habits, only buy products that meet safety standards, charge your devices safely, dispose and recycle your batteries responsibly, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the great Orange County Fire Authority. You'd like to say a few words, please.
Well, thanks. The OCFA, we value our relationship with the city of Rancho Santa Margarita and our community. I think we've kind of hit on a lot of the topics, but cfa.org has a lot of tips on lithium-ion battery safety. But the big ones are really buy UL-tested products. So any of this cheap stuff you're getting off the internet typically is not our best because we're seeing more and more fires coming from battery-operated devices. So once your device is fully charged, don't leave it on the charger. Go ahead and unplug it. And if it's damaged, make sure you dispose of it properly. We have four disposal sites, the closest being off of La Pata and Ortega. So with that, we're also coming into fire season, so make sure you're checking your smoke detectors, changing the batteries if you have to, your carbon monoxide alarms. And make sure if you have residential fire sprinklers, you're testing those annually. So that'll reduce a lot of the risk that you're going to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and take a quick picture while our camera person is coming toward us. I want to acknowledge that the OCFA was present all weekend at our Rancho Family Fest, and it was, you had the truck there. It was wonderful. Our first responders also from the Sheriff's Department were there. Thank you. Our ambulance company was there, and the public really appreciates all that you do. So thank you. All right, that brings us to item four, Public Comments. To my council colleagues, I'll point out that we have received four ecomments prior to the meeting. You have copies before you. Judy Cunningham writes to us with respect to providing compliments to the city council in dealing with some of the really disrespectful public comments that were delivered to the council during one of our recent meetings. We also received three comments, one from Beth Heard, one from Russ Corey, and one from Rhonda Lenberg regarding Rancho Family Fest. They appreciated all the effort that went into putting on that event and the opportunity that it gave them to share important information from the community associations of Rancho and their fire prevention efforts on behalf of all of our officers. We thank those four residents for their comments. We have a number of people that have asked to speak in person tonight. So first up, I'm going to call forward Cedric Campbell. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
I'm Cedric Campbell. I'm the district executive for the Saddleback District for Scouting America, the Explorer Executive as well. Scouting America, as you guys might know, used to be called Boy Scouts of America. This is my first visit here, so I wanted to share with you some statistics and maybe ask for your help. There's about 45,000 kids between 5 and 18 that are right here in Saddleback County, which is fantastic. And about, no, just under 30% are right here in Rancho, or sorry, Santa Margarita. And that's great news, about 13,000 of them. So they are here to support the community any way we can, whether it's in projects, helping the elderly, et cetera, et cetera. Here's the bad news, there's only about 250 that are actually here in this community. Most of them may be living here, but they're belonging to other organizations because we don't have enough units to support. So I'm looking for your help to be able to get scouting more units, more cutbacks, troops, or crew programs right out here by opening the doors to our schools, putting the word out, having some participation, and letting us know what we can do better. If you know the words, join me. The Scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. These are all the characteristics that we teach kids from 5 to 20 years old. Those are the kids that we're trying to create, and we want those kids in this community. So you'll see more of me because I'm the person that's supposed to be building this organization, and I think we failed in many ways by not being a part of the organization. So thank you for your time. I look forward to it. Mayor Beal, there's an invitation in your email box for the Scoutarama event coming up on November 15th. Take a look at it. We'd love to have you enjoy and be part of our organization as well.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Appreciate you being here. Thanks for sharing that important information with us.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Proten.
In fact, just make a comment, Cedric. You do a great job. The scouting programs here in Rancho Santa Margarita, and I'm intimately involved with Troop 727 and Troop 7272. And I'm one of the individuals, at least in our city, that was really in favor of allowing, if you will, young girls to be part of Scouts of America. I think it's fantastic, and Troop 7272 is a perfect example of that. Every time I go see those young ladies, the troop gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And that's really a credit to the administration, to the scout leaders, of course, to the parents of these young women. So I've been honored to speak at a lot of Eagle Scout presentations for those people, both Troop 727, Troop 7272, the former Troop 618. And so I think you could rest assured that we are very scout-friendly here in Rancho Santa Margarita, and I look forward to meeting you again.
And I look forward to some female crews coming up soon.
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Janine Carter Hansen.
Good evening, welcome. Is this on? Oh, yeah, it is. Okay. I'm speaking in response to Mayor Beal's comment at the city council meeting on August 27th. Today has been my first ability to speak to the city council on his comments. As you're aware, gerrymandering is legal, thanks to the Supreme Court decision, Rucho versus Common Cause in 2019. It is ironic that some support gerrymandering when it falls in their favor. Texas launched the effort to redraw congressional districts at the request of the president. Our governor would not have taken this step had it not been for the reckless action of the state of Texas. You mentioned the taking of rights away from the Republicans of California. Well, what about the rights of Democrats in Texas? California Republicans have the option to vote on this issue. Texas Democrats did not, and my daughter is one of them. If it were not for the Republican majority in DC to refuse to stand up to the president, we would not be in this fight for democracy. The Republicans have the majority in both houses and will pass whatever the president's demand with no regard for what's best for the country, their state, or their congressional district, including our Congresswoman, Young Kim. I received a postcard from her office earlier this year indicating she would never vote for any cuts to Medicaid, and that's exactly what she did when she voted for the big, terrible bill. You may be outraged, but note, Republicans created this situation sparking Prop 50. The Republicans have also created this monster in the White House, and the Democrats are fighting back so we don't lose our democracy. Thank you.
Appreciate those comments. As I mentioned, all five members of this city council have taken a strong position in opposition to that proposition, and we urge all residents to vote no. Next up is Amber Bloom.
Good evening, welcome. Good evening. I think I've addressed the council before on this issue. I really hope, and I think it is true to say, that the council is really interested in hearing from people in the city, residents of the city. And yet, as I've said before, it's really hard to get an agenda item actually onto the agenda for discussion. My understanding, as was confirmed last time, is that it requires two council members to agree to there being an agenda item, being actually on the agenda. So I'd love to propose that we have some sort of working group or discussion to try and figure out how there's more communication between the city council and the public, not just in this forum where we're allowed to give public comments, where there's supposed to be no comments back, there's not actually a two-way conversation. And a lot of times, council members don't actually even look at people when they're giving their comment. So I would really request that there was some conversation about how we can have a two-way dialogue between city members, council members, and those people in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Brean Boyle. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I'll just translate the last thing you've said about Prop 50, which is that the council agreed to say they were against something that is actually a democratic process. So just making sure people understand that. But I'm just here, again, to remind everyone in town how long these council members have been controlling our city and your money. For those listening, I'd like to say that elections matter. This city council already had a hold on the city when they redistricted for voting purposes. They drew lines across the map that allowed them to remain in their seats, which follows the theme of not being so democratic, clearly. That's the vibe here. But let's go through the tenure of the council to underscore how thoroughly power has been concentrated in this small, closed circle. As a reminder, RSM was incorporated in January of 2000. Tony Beal has been on the council since 2004, but his influence began even earlier on the Planning Commission. He's served as mayor six times. Brad McGur has been on the council since 2012, again with prior service on the Planning Commission, and he's been mayor twice. Anne Figueroa joined the council in 2018 after three years on the Planning Commission, and she too has held the mayor's seat. Jerry Holloway, he's been on the council since 2002 and served as mayor four times. Perry Lynn Baird, our newest member, is only here because the redistricted maps finally cracked open a door for this absurd fraternity. With this new map, the mayor is elected citywide and appoints all five planning commissioners. The next election is in 2026, so please mark your calendars for those of you at home. I just wanted to come up here and ask for the city council also to require term limits for council members. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Breen. Wanted to assure you, you talk about being in charge of the money. This city is very financially strong and stable. As you may know, we have a balanced budget. We finish each year with a surplus, and we have reserves in excess of one year. Our full budget is adopted in open public meetings, just like this, where the entire city is welcome to attend, and that budget is available for anyone that's interested to review. We'd be happy to provide that to you. Next up is Tasha Search. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is Tasia Search.
Thank you, Tasia.
And it's been a long time since I've been here to talk to you. Unfortunately, I have not been able to get to these meetings because I have been very busy on Wednesdays, way too much work to do. I've tried to listen in on the audio either later at night when you're doing them or other days. Unfortunately, anyone with hearing problems, which I consider a disability and which I have, the audio is terrible for someone trying to listen in. I've worn hearing aids for about 20 years, and anyone can tell you they aren't perfect, but they do make life easier. Unfortunately, though, recently, in the last six months, I've been diagnosed with vestibular migraines as well. And the worst part of that is not the headaches, which I've pretty much got under control, but it's the feeling of dullness in my ears, like when you're in the airplane and/or high altitudes, and you have to plug your nose and blow. That doesn't help. Nothing I take helps, and so my hearing loss is exacerbated. So your audio recordings are of no value to me. And like I said, it's very difficult for me to get here on Wednesdays. I'm here tonight because I felt it was important to come speak to you, and I'm completely exhausted and would rather be home in bed, but here I am. My work makes it too difficult. I understand that councilperson Barrett previously moved and asked that the city investigate videotaping these meetings. Since we are not, since we are not only the last city in Orange County to have videotape meetings, we are dead last to even investigate the cost of doing so. I'm very upset and disappointed that councilperson Barrett did not even get a second to her motion, like, no, we don't want to even talk about this. We don't want to even discuss this. Well, that's unfortunate and fair to those with disabilities like me, or those who cannot attend due to work or family obligations. I see that you somehow snuck in a very costly horse fence to add to the $800 million monument on Antonio Parkway. And now I understand there's some type of bronze plaque to go along with that monument and costs somewhere in the vicinity of $1,300. What will that plaque read? I certainly hope it's not a big pat on the back with all your names on it, like the water park has. You know, the late Richard Reese, his vision for this city was to have a participatory governance. I've previously informed you what that definition is. It's high time that you start governing that way and listening to your constituents. We've been coming for a long time asking for things, and they never happen. But we're the ones who pay your salary and give you the perks that you enjoy because you sit on that dais. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring to side 5, the Consensus Committee. All matters on the Consensus calendar are to be approved as soon as the council members can. All matters on the consent calendar are to be approved against a motion unless a council member, member of the staff, or member of the public requests separate action with a specific item on the consent. Do we need to remove any items from the consent? If not, I'd entertain a motion. We have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Apposed. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Bringing us to item six, which is public hearing items. 6.1 is an ordinance amending Title X, Buildings and Construction of the Rancho Santa Margarita Municipal Code by adopting the California Building Standards Code 2025 Edition, California Code of Regulations Title 24, including the California Building Code, Residential Code, Green Building Standards Code, Electrical Code, Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, Administrative Code, Energy Code, Wildland Urban Interface Code, Fire Code, Historical Building Code, Existing Building Code, and Referenced Standards Code, together with certain amendments and additions and deletions, and adopting the 2024 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code and the 2024 Property Maintenance Code. I have a mouthful. Ms. Kuda, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Beal and members of the city council. This item and the ordinances before you were introduced for first reading on September 10, and the public hearing was scheduled for tonight. I'll give a brief overview of what's in your staff report. State law requires that the California Building Standards Commission adopt and publish the California Building Standards Code every three years. New codes were recently published, and the triennial code cycle automatically goes into effect on January 1 of 2026. It's important to note that there's not just one building code. What we refer to collectively as the building code actually consists of separate codes, which are all listed in the staff report, and were just listed off by the mayor. The 2025 edition of the California Building Standard Code contains 13 separate parts. The 2022 edition previously had 12 separate parts, and new to the 2025 edition is the California Wildland Urban Interface Code, also known as the WUI code. The WUI requirements were formerly in Chapter 7A of the California Building Code and are now a standalone part. While the building codes will automatically take effect on January 1 of 2026, the city goes through the adoption process every cycle in order to enact modifications known as local amendments. State law permits jurisdictions to make local amendments as long as the modifications to the codes are at least as stringent as the requirements adopted by the state. And to make such local amendments, the city must make findings that the modifications respond to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. The city has adopted a number of local amendments during each of the prior code adoption cycles. Some of the amendments are administrative, such as designating building and safety staff. Others address appeal authority or relate to local conditions, such as the requirement for class A roofing or review of six-foot fences. Local amendments do not carry over from prior code cycles and must be adopted with each new addition of the building codes. This cycle, we are proposing local amendments to four codes: the California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Wildland Urban Interface Code, and the California Fire Code. The details of these amendments are included in your staff report. And aside from updated references based on the new Wildland Urban Interface Code, the amendments are all the same as approved for the 2022 codes. The process of adopting the building codes is to approve ordinances which adopt all of the codes by reference into Title X of the Rancho Santa Margarita Municipal Code. Consistent with past code adoption cycles, we have separated the proposed amendments into two ordinances which amend Title X. Those are for Buildings and Construction. So one of the ordinances addresses local amendments to the building codes, and the second one addresses the local amendments to the fire code. The recommended fire code amendments do come to us directly from the Orange County Fire Authority. You'll see in your staff report that there's a detailed color-coded table that the OCFA provides us and explains all the proposed amendments. The attachments show that the necessary renumbering that happened based on the WUI code, and it illustrates that the vast majority of the amendments are existing. They're noted as existing, which means they were all adopted in prior code cycles. So our recommendation tonight is for the city council to conduct the second reading and public hearing, and then adopt the two ordinances before you. We have our building and safety staff in the audience as well as representatives. We have John Bowden, Orange County Fire Authority Fire Safety Engineer, and we have our building officials, Ted Halsey and Shane Perry, and we have Derek Bingham, who also prepared the staff report tonight. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuda. So we did have a meeting on September 10 for the first reading on this item. Is there anything in our materials tonight that is different from a substantive standpoint from the information that we reviewed and discussed at that meeting?
Nothing at all.
Okay, thank you. This is the time for questions of staff. To my left, Mayor Protim, anything? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. This will be the time to receive any public testimony. The city clerk, do we have any?
We have none.
Okay, and I'm going to close the public hearing and turn the matter over to the city council for discussion and action. Here to begin.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt ordinance number 25-05 and ordinance number 25-6 per staff writing.
Very good. Sir, a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item seven is new business. We have none scheduled. Continued items, we have none scheduled. So we're back to public comments. This is the last opportunity tonight for public comments. We have one speaker request from Breann Boyle.
Yeah, so I didn't want to, I didn't want to talk to you guys again today, but I felt compelled to, one, sister in disability who has also been ignored up here. But because you responded to me and other people tonight with our comments, so last meeting and in other meetings, the mayor has argued with us and other people. So just addressing the decorum of the meetings, Mayor Beal is often interrupting public comments or gives a lecture following them based on his own opinions. You heard it tonight when he's talking about, you know, supporting democracy when someone's just trying to voice their opinions about responses, argued with me again about financial stuff that I didn't even talk about. So then the public, of course, is not allowed to respond, and now there's a new sign out there telling us that we have to be quiet again. So according to the council's own rules, though, the mayor and council aren't allowed to do this. I'm reading this from the rules that were approved on January 24, 2024, in that meeting. So it says, "If a member of the public addresses the city council on a matter that is not on the agenda during public comments, city council members shall neither engage in extended discussions nor deliberate," which I think is important here, "on the matter. If a council member so wishes, the council member may, during the council member comments portion of the meeting, request that the matter be placed on the next agenda," lol. That's not a part of the rules. I'm just adding that in. "No action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except the city council members may briefly respond or answer questions posed by the public comments." But definitely not debating, as you've said in our own rules. So I just want to read those to you in case you just, like, forgot about them. But in every meeting that I've been to since June, when I started coming here, the mayor has argued with public comments or given lengthy rebuttal after. You can listen to the August 29 meeting, for an example, when they attempted to dress down another resident at length just because they were stating some things that they were concerned about, which is not following their own rules. So there is really nothing civil happening here in the discourse that they're trying to have with residents. So once again, I'll just remind everybody that you can vote them out. Thanks.
Okay, brings us to item 10, City Manager's Report. The city manager.
I do not have a report this evening. Thank you.
Item 11 is Other Matters Presented by the Mayor and Council Members. Mayor, Councilmember Figaro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Sean still here? Sean, I just wanted to congratulate you for your leadership in the Chamber of Commerce this year. I know it's coming to an end. This was a fantastic event this weekend. It was amazing, from the bands to the Kid Zone, to the restaurants, showcasing all the wonderful restaurants we have here in our city and our businesses as well. But I think one thing we really found out, that this event is now drawing crowds from all over South Orange County. This is not just Rancho Santa Margarita event anymore. I talked to people from Tustin, from Dana Point, San Clemente, Laguna Niguel. So kudos to everybody in the chamber for working so hard, all the volunteers that worked the whole weekend. So you guys did a fantastic job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, anything? Okay, that concludes our agenda tonight. We're going to go ahead and adjourn. The next regular meeting of the city council will be held Wednesday, October 22, 7 p.m., here in the council chambers. Thanks for attending this meeting as adjourned.